Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Valani. Are there any changes? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the role in tonight's agenda?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And Mayor Portem, if I may, call, will call as well.
Oh, sure.
Okay, just for the record to know.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Mayor Portem Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Turek.
Yeah, no problem. I was already trying to shave time. Okay. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll open the floor for public comments. You may comment on agenda items that are before us tonight, as well as those that are not on tonight's agenda. When you stand to comment, please state your name and city of residence. Seeing no one standing to speak, we'll close the public comments section and move on to tonight's order of business. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on our agenda?
One budget work session, matter of discussion of the proposed 2022-2023 City of Berkeley budget. A city clerk, B, building and planning, C, parks and recreation, D, public works, E, finance and treasury, F, CVBG, G, debt funds, H, capital improvement, I, fringe benefits fund, J, public safety retirement.
Thank you. So much like last night, what I am anticipating is that you will give us the highlights. I'm not expecting a line by line. In fact, I please do not do that. But if any overall broad brush stroke kinds of things about your department and anything that you want to highlight that you would want us to know. Ms. Mitchell, I'm throwing it right back to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
We will start on page nine. First item of note is under materials and supplies. There is additional built-in costs in the budget for additional stationary supplies that will be needed to send out new voter ID cards to all voters in the city. This is going to be a requirement due to our, we just, we just routine all residents will have the same precincts, but all Congress, Senate, State, District numbers that residents are in will change. So that is across the board. That will also be an increase in postage as this is a great process because as we send out the voter ID card, we will have cards that are returned. And that's an important part of the funding process, check the voter rolls. And we do have very specific guidelines through the state as far as addressing what types of mail is returned to office. So we mail letters, we do vetting, things like that, just to assure that the resident is not on the right date address. So there will be some additional costs involved with that. On page 10. The item, main item of note in the first budget is under consultant. We do have included for your viewing tonight, document scanning and indexing. That would be the new initiative at the clerk's office. It's to improve our customer service response by being able to reply timely to internal and external people who are requesting documents at the clerk's office. This process includes an offset company who will come in. They will take all of our documents securely, they'll scan them, index them, and then would return the documents that we need to keep for our retention schedule and destroyed documents that of course we could destroy. This is a joint project with Mr. Lisica and Ms. Mathis. It's going to touch all of our departments. And we're in the process of doing our due diligence on that at this time. We've already interviewed and looked at some references for two companies. We've done a demo and we're just going through the process to make sure that we make an informed decision. But this is important for us, I think, to take our response back to the next level.
Is this going to be ongoing? So once we get the initial, the old stuff documented, then there'll be a process to forevermore scan or generate electronically?
It is, yes. So that way for the clerk's office. And then, of course, once we get all this research done and the plan in place, then other departments as well could utilize.
In the section, I just also want to mention with Unicode that it's very slow in getting updated. So that I would like to see updated with much more frequency.
Absolutely. It's not been in that way. There's no changes in contractual services, that there's no changes in price and cost, and that is based on the reelection. The next page is page 11. I do have one change on this page. Under office equipment and maintenance, the total maintenance fee is going to be changed from $3,618 to $6,131. This is a new quote that I just got, and it's being increased for all of the open county hair customers.
Do you have a breakdown for those two? For the, because we've got the, what's that, Verity Scan and Touchwriter, these two different items?
I see the Touchwriter is $2,280. And then the remainder is for Verity Scan.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there I did speak with Mark earlier, and I do have carry forward this current budget to come back cost. The next item of note is capital outlay. After talking with Mr. Lisica, we are going to move the laptops forward one year, which is reflected in the capital equipment request worksheet. We're going to move it up forward one more year to 2023, 2024. We feel with maintenance and seeing, you know, he works out on the hard drives and keeps these whole books in great condition. So we think that's something there.
Well, any other questions on page 12? Okay.
And then there's now to page 12.
I thought we were on 12. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, it was kind of 11 and 12. And that concludes my question. If anyone has any question?
I guess not. Questions? Well, thank you, Ms. Mitchell, and your department for being so succinct. Moving on to building and planning.
Let's go to 6:30. Do you want me to come back?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take a break.
All right. Madam Mayor Portem, jump into page 38, please. Same with the building plans here, a couple of items of note. I've talked to a couple of you about this, but we're in the process of really trying to do a lot, a lot more with the community development department. It has two different functionalities to it. One half building, one half planning. So the positions that you see here, as you start into salaries and wages, that covers two of the four positions that we'll have in that department there. In total, across both, both planning and building, we will reorganize the department to have a director, a zoning administrator, a permits clerk, and a licensing clerk. If you remember, we asked in the previous budget year for funding for that third clerk position. So this is, we did not fill that spot, but we are carrying over the intent by that. We've worked with Carlisle Wortman to get some, get some ideas, some best practices. They've seen other places and then also benefit from some of the parting wisdom that Aaron Schluto left with us, as well as the experience that Megan has had so far as our interim. And we think we've got a better way to be more efficient and be more, have a high level of customer service for this particular department. So you'll see two of those positions are noted on the building side. And also this contains the contractual services headline here. It is, I guess, we continue to provide inspection services through contractual obligations, but cannot. This is a percentage-based service that we have. So they get 65%, right, Lori? For the most part, 65%.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent, okay. Seventy-five percent of the various permit fees that we get. Both Lori and Kim Anderson go over those feelings with a fine-tooth comb. They have saved the city. I don't even know if we have already totaled the amount, but they have caught a number of things that McKenna has not, always very diligent. So thank you to Lori and Kim both for making sure that these numbers truly do reflect what McKenna was entitled to. And I think we've accurately gauged them for the coming two years as well.
I just want to say, I really do appreciate that. And not that anyone's trying to cheat anybody, but it's, that check and balance is so important to have, especially when you're working with a contractual.
Right.
Service, and it just keeps it all where it needs to be. So thank you.
And really, most of it's Kim, and she's the one who really caught thousands of dollars at the beginning. They were charging for things that they shouldn't have been charging for, and now they know, so that's not happening.
Good.
We always check because if there's credits, certain things they shouldn't be taking, so.
Well, thank you, Kim, even though she's down here.
Thank you. And given this insight, are we concerned about them as an ongoing vendor? Or do we think this is?
I don't think so. I think it was just the initial, the way they were doing it. And, you know, we apparently viewed it differently and had to clear some stuff up, you know? So they were, yeah, so I don't, I think ongoing now were clear and they haven't complained and, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
So it was more of an initial onboarding thing?
Yes.
Good to know. Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Dropping to page 39 now. Anyone here I want to call note to, just generally between contractual services as well as some capital outlay. We also, in addition to reorganizing the people elements of it, who want to utilize more BSNA. We do have a timeline of several BSNA projects that we want to try to take on. This is not front in line, so it might be the back half of the fiscal year here. And it may even, even be a project where it actually bleeds over into 23, 24 for some of those upgrades. We really want to make sure that from a process standpoint, we're doing the best that we can do before we try to look to technology to solve a bunch of issues that are actually human issues so far. So in that point, once we get the BSNA software, we also see an uptick in training from BSNA. BSNA has taken leaps and bounds since the last time that we truly sat down and gone point by point of what it could do. Part of the shift that we want to make here is, Commander Shun, as we talked about, is wonderful. Is very much a process person. She, she can take, start to finish, point by point, a process and work with people and work through a permanent process. Too many processes. But she is the person that we're looking to, to promote to the zoning administrator position. So she will no longer be the person that handles our permit process. Dana Bauer, who is our licensing clerk, is going to shift to that permit position. And we're going to spend as much time as she needs with BSNA and get her up to date on every capacity that it currently has, even before we start to talk about making that next leap forward. And a lot of that leap forward is going to be to try to turn BSNA, have a larger element facing the public. So you can go and you can apply online and you can potentially make payments online, schedule permits online, or schedule inspections online, things like that. But we all, or we already know that what we're doing with BSNA, it's taking such step forwards that we are largely scratching the surface. And a part of that is our process up to this point has been whoever has been there longest, trains the new person. So you're only getting the benefit of what that individual already knows, but we can solve that through training.
So BSNA will be doing the training?
Yes.
And I just want to say I'm very encouraged when I'm seeing this. I think it's important. And I like the fact that, you know, the city manager's office and departments within are forward-thinking and are moving ahead with these things that will absolutely, you know, down the road, make it easier. I do think that you're smart in really laying that good solid foundation because, you know, if you want to build on that, you need to have everything in place and where it needs to be before you start, you know, adding. So I like the plan that I'm carrying.
I'm going to record it as well.
And anyone else? Okay.
Looking now to, all the way to page 60. The planning side is the other flip of the coin. The positions here are the director position you'll find here, and I believe we allocated the zoning administrative position here. I'm not, we just kind of split the two. So that, those you'll find, the other half of the positions there. It is an uptick in the total salaries. So we have the director, which is going to be the one that we're hopefully going to be securing and hiring. It's going to come in at a higher wage than Mr. Schluto left. And then we also need to be hiring the, as everybody moves up one, we'll be hiring the licensing clerk as well. So there'll be, there'll be an increase in wages across the whole community development department. So with that, as we shift down, there's also some uptick in some memberships as well. We want to make sure that our employees have access to member professional organizations and have memberships that will help them better serve the public as much as possible. For the acronym A map, those not familiar with it, is the Michigan Association of Planning, APA. It's the American Planning Association. And then AICP is a professional certification that planners strive to. And we'll have to, once they even get it, they will have to continue to take coursework and have continuing education credits to maintain that. Going to page 60, but bleeding over into 61, consultants. This, we're going to spend quite a bit on consultants over the next couple of years. On 60, there's a line item, a planning consultant, engaging this at about $2,000 a month. One of the bits of feedback we got from Mr. Schluto during your exit interview was that there was really nobody for her to depend on for these, for the broader question. So not only does she not have, we didn't give her a whole lot of administrative supports, which we're remaining now, but even when she's got a planning question, would it be nice if she was phoning, using kind of informal networks to say like, hey, I used to work with you. What do you think about this? This would give her the opportunity to either bounce ideas off somebody, seek out best practices, have a consultant to do research perhaps that she doesn't have time to do. Or even say, we get busy like we are now with site plans and say, I can't, I need to focus on the zoning code or sign updates. I'm going to farm out this review of the site plan to this planning consultant as needed. So there's a number of different ways we could use this. Again, this is something that Mr. Schluto thought was going to be very important as she exited. We'll have a new director soon. We'll see what their approach will be. So this may be something that we don't need to use. But she, Mrs. Schluto is pretty adamant that the next person at least will be given this opportunity as far as managing their workload. Any questions on that? We're shifting to page 61.
Yes, I just want to commend you for doing such a thorough exit interview so that we could learn from the process and from somebody who has been through it before. So thank you for that.
And for, if I can just piggyback on that, for listening and then taking it to heart and acting on it, not just like, oh, well, her opinion. So I think that you're to be commended for truly hearing her and moving forward with some things.
Yeah, I, it was a real shot when we lost her, and especially for the reasons that we lost her. It's that we asked too much of her and let her go far too long, struggling without being able to act upon it sooner. So thank you. And it's, it's learning from mistakes, being quite frank with you.
Yep, that's good.
Next up, page 61, continuing the use of consultants. As we know, the A1 recommendation from the new master plan was to completely overhaul our zoning code. We'll see that's reflected in here, not only a technical review, but also the rewrite itself. So in total, about, just shy of about $20,000 worth of work to be done on the zoning code here. We're hoping that this is a 12-month process that we can get it done. You never know what could happen. It could end up going longer. But as long as we can get it done close to that timeline, then we'll look to the next fiscal year to start overhauling some of the sign ordinance as well. Sign ordinance will likely be a one to two-year process based on some of the feedback we've seen from other communities. You can really get mad in the details. There's court cases that need to be accounted for. There's, there's a lot to do here. So this will be a partnership with probably a third-party consultant, as well as in large part our own city attorney as well that advises on some of the things here.
Good stuff.
I just want to comment on the zoning ordinance, right? I, I feel it likely is going to take longer and cost more. I do think it is a, even the complexity of the site ordinance, I think, the zoning ordinance is a much larger dog, much more complicated. Is even more of a mess than our site ordinance. So I think this likely will go across multiple years.
Thank you.
And our plan is, our intent is not to have the two overlap. So if we do need to go into a subsequent budget year, we likely would just be pushing the sign portion of it back and not trying to double up here. So be able to maintain the similar line item across the two fiscal years as projected here. I'm bringing now to professional development. We see a little bit of uptick there, but really only accounting for, for the same mentality that went into memberships, which is just making sure that our staff has access to learning opportunities at a reasonable rate through professional organizations.
And are you finding, Matt, that when those things are available, staff are taking advantage of it? They're, they're utilizing those things?
Yeah.
Provided that they know it's available.
I do, I do. I do see that. One of the things that we may end up looking at that's a little bit different than here, will probably be similar to our amount, is the Michigan Association of Planning Conference isn't in here. There are scholarship opportunities, but we may, if we don't get scholarships opportunities, we may have our incoming director attend, just statewide ones, not the national ones. Because I think we do gain a lot of value when we talk about Michigan specific, especially with laws and zoning and intricacies there. If it's, if it mirrors like my professional organization, you start to zero out at the national level. You're talking much more general terms and it doesn't take into account the, you know, all the special things about Michigan. So that might be the one to change. But I think we do have a lot of our staff members and department directors taking advantage of statewide conferences.
Good.
Any questions on page 16, something?
61.
And then 62 is really the summary page for the department.
Any questions? Thank you for a well-presented building and planning. Next. We're not going line by line.
You missed it, don't you?
All right. Okay, so as the mayor person passed, I'm going to go, I'm going to start on page 119 and highlight a few things. So 119 is our revenue portion for recreation revolving. I'll give everyone a minute to get their statement in front of me.
Page five.
Okay. So a couple of things to point out. We are still awaiting the state grant for the work that was done at Oxford. Everything's been submitted. We have a couple of extra things that we have to resubmit, but so far so good there. So we should be getting that in this year. If not, then it'll go into next year's revenue. Pointing out youth camp, obviously, we didn't run in 2020. We ran a scaled-down camp in 2021. We are hoping to run as close to 2019, 2018 camp as we can this year. In terms of kids registering, that's looking great, still really, really, really trying to get a staff. And this is not a problem you need to us. This is not a problem you need to practice in recreation. But we are hopeful that that will still happen. We are running again at Anderson Middle School. That'll be our third year at Anderson. Our fourth year using the school ever since we shut down the ICE arena. So we're, we're looking at these projections in terms of revenue for camp. Camp is our biggest revenue maker in terms of where we get our revenue programming will be next. And we did raise fees just minimally, it's $5 a week extra, which we felt made sense. It's not, we still get people all the time who are used to paying normal childcare costs.
Oh, yeah.
That's it, right? And then they find out everything they get from it. So as someone who's, whose children are now in elementary school, would pay for child, you know? So we get that a lot. And, you know, Scott Genix, who was our program manager and camp director, runs an absolutely great camp. He's actually with camp staff right now. They're, we're in our directors. They have a great slate of directors. We just now need more counselors to work with them. Other things to point out, we had a pretty successful dream cruise last year. It mirrored previous years. We're looking at having an even more successful year in this coming year. You know, little, little changes that we make, but pointing that out. And the same thing with miscellaneous programs. We, our programming is picking up again. We've added additional classes, additional classes. We reopened in June of 2021, but kind of on a slow basis and somewhere slower for us in terms of programming in the building. Prior to that, we really flipped inside out. We're running programs outside. But our building, you know, mornings and evenings is full again, and we're really, really happy to see it. So seeing those revenues pick up is, is big for us. Any questions on 119 before we move on?
Just one comment. I want to compliment the programming that you have. My daughter grew up through the Parks and Rec summer programming, and I do appreciate how affordable it was, especially as a single parent.
Yeah.
And what amazing programming it was. And even my puppy has gone through all of the training classes.
They'll sell out quick.
It's just amazing that, you know, you can do kids, seniors, adults, puppies. She's now a certified therapy dog from the classes at Parks and Rec. So I just, you guys do an amazing job.
Thank you. I always, one of the things that came up many years ago was, you know, the age of building and infrastructure and all that. But what we have, we work, we work really hard. And I will get to the seniors, which I'm excited to tell you, some of the things that we're doing now. Jennifer, our senior program manager, but it's, it's, they were, we really crank out what we can. And then the pandemic also allowed us to really do some programming outside, and we are, we're continuing that. So we actually were running dog classes outside last year. It was great.
Yeah, we did them.
Yep. 120, the only thing I want to point out here is our park rentals. The only thing that we rent out, we get calls probably daily starting in the spring to rent other parks. The only thing we rent out is the J.C. Park Pavilion, but last year it was rented almost every weekend in the spring and summer, and this year it's, it's continuing. So that's something that I just kind of want to point out that I, I do think at some point we will look at raising the cost, especially when some of the upgrades happen, especially when the bathrooms happen. And just really, really looking at what that can mean. Again, we're not talking huge revenue, and we want to keep our prices reasonable. But I think the more that you add to something, the more that you can increase that a little bit.
Absolutely.
I think it's smart to do that. That concludes 119 and 120. Unless there are any questions?
I was just curious with description 614, referring to, I read it in the park.
I don't know what that is.
Okay.
Lori?
I don't know.
Oh, you know what? I think that's, as sponsorships, like for Dream, I think that's what that is, but I don't know why that number, something might have happened. But I think that's why that situation's not there. But I wanted to say it's for, we're, we're going to try to get either DT or consumers or someone for a cruise bus sponsorship.
Thank you.
Yep. Right, Lori, I think that is what that is. Page 121, the biggest thing that I want to point out here is that we have asked for one additional full-time employee. We run with five full-time employees. And at one point, our department ran with additional full-time employees and also part-time. Seven years ago, when I took over, we sort of right-sized and also put people in different positions. And that worked for quite a while, but we have increased the programs that we're doing. We have increased the special events we're doing, and we'll get to that in terms of the concert series. We have increased the actual projects and grants and other things that we're doing. And that's all happening in-house. And one of the things about Parks Recreation that happens a lot is it takes us outside of the actual building. And I've got people, you know, going to set something up today. I mean, Mr. came in to comment. He and I were cleaning up last. We were meeting with someone at a park to go over something else. And then, and often we're left with one, maybe, like maybe two or. Uh, he and I were cleaning up last. We were meeting with someone at a park to go over something else and then, and often we're left with one, maybe just like maybe two or one person in the building. Um, and it's problematic because there's sponsoring and there's people coming in. And so I, I actually, um, and I said this to someone, I, I think I probably should have asked for this earlier than I did because it's something I take really seriously, asking for an additional full-time employee. Um, and it's something that I know is a big ask. Um, and I, I don't go into it lightly. What I had asked the city manager and I laid out in a memo a couple of months ago was um, a couple of different reasons. One, we need it and we need the staff coverage. And two, I do think that when you have really good employees, particularly in local government, you wanna retain those employees. And sometimes employees outgrow the position they're in. So Amanda Slusarsky has been our office administrator for six and a half years, which is a pretty, which is a pretty significant amount of time. Um, in that time, she has done the role of the office administrator and also done our events, our communications, our marketing. And with Parks and Recreation, a lot of what you do is events and marketing and communications. And we have a great communications person for the city who helps us tremendously, uh, Tori Mathis, but we also need that in-house and we have a lot of needs for that. So um, a lot of Parks and Recreation uh departments uh employ someone, title something similar to like event communications or specialist or that sort of thing. We took from different departments throughout Michigan to create an event communication specialist position, which we planned to promote Amanda Slusarsky to. And then we would fill the position of office administrator. So we would fill her role. So that would be the sixth person. Uh, I think it's necessary in terms of staff coverage. I think it's necessary in terms of what we're asking of our current employees and their time, particularly because in the summer we run multiple evening and weekend events. Um, and I, I, I think it's just, it's, it's time. We've we've been working for the last two plus years throughout the pandemic. Really in the fall of twenty twenty, we came back to flip inside out and um, employees have, have really done a lot and stepped up and, and I do feel that it's now and even maybe a little delayed, but I'm here now asking for it. And I spoke with the city manager and again laid out, I created a draft of what that new position would do. Um, and then asking to fill that office administrative position. So that is part of what you see here. Any questions? I'm, I'm happy to answer.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, I'm excited about that possibility. I think all the reasons that you said it makes a lot of sense. Um, since there is kind of communications as part of the title and I recognize Parks and Rec also has a lot of communications. Can you speak a little bit about how this role would supplement or work with Tori Mathis?
Sure. So a lot of what we already do, and, and Tori would be able to speak on this as well, so I'm not speaking. I, I know that she would support me in this, is that either she'll send something that and say, does this work for you guys? And she'll bounce it off of Amanda or myself or both of us. Or Amanda creates something and then has like approval because we obviously wanna make sure that we're all sort of speaking in the same Berkeley voice. Um, so anything from flyers to social media to um, you know, advertisements, they like we're advertising for the um for the summer concert series to the Berkeley bus. Amanda does a huge portion of, Parks and Recreation is a huge portion of that. And a lot of that work was done with Parks and Recreation and Tori. And again, Tori would speak on that. So it will be one voice and it'll be a lot of communications, but also marketing and pushing. One of the big things that I wrote it kind of all over my budget and it's something I've been speaking with staff about for the last few years. And you see it throughout our budget for certain things and master reports that I really wanna elevate what we do and really like bring us up. Um, and so I think that having a position like this does that. She'll also be the main person managing a lot of our smaller events, like our concert series and our other events. A lot of what Mr. McMinn is now doing is more senior focused and then the bigger events like Cruise Fest and Dream Cruise and those in itself is well, it's a year-round thing, right? That he and I both work on. Um, and so, oh, so it'll be a combination of those two things. And I would be happy to, I, I, like I said, I do have a draft. I could share with you um, a draft of what is entailed in that job description and other duties as assigned.
Anyone else? It sounded great, Trish.
Good work.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Thank you. Um, nothing else of no or really anything major different on the rest of one twenty-one. Um, similar to one twenty-two, uh, pretty, pretty similar stuff that you'll see out of uh equipment supplies, uh, memberships and dues holding pretty steady. Um, custodial services. I just do wanna point out that um custodials, I think that may be a misprint. Sorry, when I'm looking at the requested budget for that line item.
Yeah, I uh.
It's cut almost in half.
Yeah.
I got this from.
We have to take a look at that. I think that's.
Yeah, um.
Because it's definitely more than that because one of the things.
I have to look because I gotta break down.
Okay.
Of the new thing.
Oh, from like from Alice, maybe?
Yeah, maybe.
It's, it's definitely lower than I.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd flag that as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, because obviously they clean our facility. We do have them cleaned daily. The rest is Oxford. Um, our maintenance staff checks on them daily. I check on them a couple of times a week. Amazing. And I'm really happy about that. Making sure that our bathrooms are clean, particularly in our parks, particularly when this is our first thing of having bathrooms in parks is really important to us. So we do have a cleaning staff that's cleaning them daily. Um, so yeah, so we'll, we'll check on that one. Uh, other things to know in on page one twenty-three at the top of one twenty-three, uh contractual services. I've been uh, one thing that I started last year was to make sure that we have um funds to trim our trees. Obviously Public Works does other trees throughout the city, but in the parks that comes out of our budget and that's something that I think for a really long time wasn't neglected. Uh, and that needs to happen kind of on a yearly basis to make sure that we don't have any low-hanging branches and clearly by walkways and place, play structures. So there's that. We are going to have a certified playground inspector come out um again to look at all of our play equipment. Um, it's a relatively low cost and something that I think is important to do every two to three years.
Absolutely.
Um, even though a lot of our clay equipment is, is relatively new and they do do an inspection after they install. The other cost on there that you see is light pole inspection. We again did that three years ago. I do think it's important to do. We do have aging light poles. It is part of our facilities, part of our maintenance. And so making sure that they're checked. When we had them checked uh a couple of years ago, we did replace two. Um, and the other ones were found to be in good condition. The one thing that they won't tell you when they're inspected is they won't tell you a time. They can't. Or insurance reasons say, this is good for ten years. This is good for five. So you have to go based off of the these ones need to be replaced. These are really bad. The rest look okay. But I do think it's important as our infrastructure, that's part of it, is aging to continue to, to check them for safety. The other thing to point out is um uh marquee maintenance. Again, this is something I always joke with the city manager that somehow Parks and Recreation got the short straw. I'm not sure how recreation marquee, but um, this is something that we gotta start to maybe look into because with the cost of um neon and, and replacements, there's very few things that do this is, is something that I really wanna keep trying to maybe bring it into the future. We have at times met with companies to go over cost or, you know, updated type of signage and, and it, it's, it's pretty costly. So that's not something um that we're looking into right now, but I still think that we need to, to keep it in mind.
Well, maybe as we, uh, we've demonstrated the success with uh, with J C, maybe it's not going to be to do some kind of a crowdsourcing type of thing. To help, um, you know, because if we were.
Save the marquee.
The inside and just completely new innards without, you know, throttle.
That's a good point.
There might be a good way.
You definitely need a breather, but.
Take a breather and then say, hey, here's what's coming up next, you know, start thinking about and then in a year or two, then we just kind of campaign.
Yeah.
You have to get some community interest and there might be some local talent that would be wanting to donate their time and skills uh to help with that. And we, maybe we just need to cover materials or something. So.
It's a really good point.
Yeah, I was gonna say we should change the name of the city of Cleve because it's always.
I know what it always happens like the.
Yeah, on the west side. It's like that.
Like what we need it.
And then we have to like do an express or it's, it's, yeah.
Great. And it's, it's out, yeah, it's out again.
I don't have anything to know.
We get dinner with the marketing with, with Tori then before.
There you go.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing I had to note on one twenty-four is we don't typically ask for a whole lot for furniture. And this isn't furniture for actually staff. This is furniture for the community center. Our tables and our chairs are aging and our building is rented and it's been used. And this was something that I think that if we replace it in the future, if there is another building, that can go with you. So it's not a way, it's not a cost that you're doing something. So, so replacing some of those tables and chairs and I mean, some of them, even when you went, there's paint and color and they're, you know, we're always putting the dollar store tablecloths on them. So, so that's what you see there. Nothing else on one twenty-four. Um, one twenty-five, you'll see youth camp. One thing to know as I start to go through the programs, I'll go through them quickly, but all of our programming, whether it's polo, polo or girls' basketball camp or, or youth camp, you'll always see the revenue when you look back at these, you know, and we go through them as the, the revenue is gonna be higher for that programming than the expense is going to be. Some are a little bit different, but you're going to see that. So obviously youth camp, you see that. This includes, we do obviously do two weeks of training for our staff. They get certified in their, their CPR and, and other certifications. Um, and like I said, the directors are currently already programming and planning. They, they need to do that. Um, nothing else. And then out of contractual, out of camp is, you know, how we pay for any of the field trips they go on or the supplies that are needed. I'm going to not really stop at any of the programming unless someone has a specific programming question. Again, the revenues are above the, the, the camp fees, um, or you know, any of, whether it's girls' volleyball or polo. Um, if you catch one that's not, let me know because we need to update that because they should be. We do go over them pretty quickly. Again, for our programming, we do seventy to thirty splits and I, I know all of you know that, but contractors come in, they teach a class or run a camp, seventy percent and the revenue, all of the revenue comes to us. Then they give us an invoice with the number of students. We check our registration. City pays them the seventy percent of that split. Um, we keep thirty percent and that's how we keep the building, I mean, going. I do wanna know, the one thing I do wanna know is on page one thirty-two, um, we had one of our biggest years and we're hoping to have an even bigger year this year with our youth tennis program. We actually started offering tennis indoors, which I didn't know we could do, but they thought we could do it and we did and people came. It was great. They would set up a net in the community center and, and they would run it and people loved it. And, and we got a lot of people who had never seen for other programming coming to do it. So it's great.
Trish, I have a question about um seventy, thirty split. Who absorbs the credit card fees? Is it the city or just the merchant?
We do.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, you know.
Yeah.
Curious because it's, it's a fee.
It is a fee.
It might be little, but it's.
Yeah.
It's a percentage plus a fee per swipe.
Yes. Yeah, and most people are paying.
Yeah.
Credit card.
Yeah. And if it's over the phone, that's another tier of pricing. So.
Yes.
I'm just, and I'm not, you know, it, it absolutely.
Something to think about. Yeah.
Just clarity. Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, page one thirty-three, community center rentals. Um, we are uh getting there with uh that, I mean, we went over the revenue and obviously the expenses are lower when people are not, we are not having to staff the building, but we are now starting to staff the building. Evenings, weekends, having more rentals. Um, so we're happy to see that coming back a little bit slower than some other things. Um, page one thirty-four is Dream Cruise. Again, this is pretty standard. Um, we, we, we've uh, Mr. McMahon and I have been doing this for a number of years as a tandem team with Dream Cruise, with Cruise Fest, um, and with the committee. And so um, we've kind of got it on a, on a pretty good cycle. One of the things that we did decide with the committee last year is we used to have a number of tents and booths along Woodward and sell at different places. Kind of over the years, we were seeing that it wasn't really making sense. So we would drop one and then drop another one. And last year with the pandemic, we just ran twelve in Woodward. And our revenue stayed that was actually a little higher than other years. You can see the same and it was better to have all the merchandise a lot easier to run. So everyone agreed that that was the smarter thing to do. We will still do the twelve mile marquee, obviously on Cruise Fest night.
Right.
But for Dream Cruise, we do the week ahead of time and, and, and the weekend of just at that one booth. And then we're not having the tent cost and spreading people out. And because again, the nice thing about, and I, I like spread this out because I think it's important for, for you, you all to, to take some of this credit too, is Berkeley's the only community that purchases the, the, the merchandise and, and then allows their nonprofits to sell and for them to get a cut. And for us, it's a really lovely thing that you do for those groups. Um, because a lot of them cannot afford that upfront cost and that's true in other cities. And they've seen it go down when they stopped doing that number of years ago. So again, I think it's really important to, to note that and, and, and it works. Um, and, and, and we have a lot of checks and balances to make sure that it works, but it's a really lovely thing that, that you do for those groups. For most of them, it's their biggest fundraiser of the year. So.
You've also kind of funneled, you know, by eliminating all the spots.
Yeah.
You kind of, in a way, it's a retail thing. You direct people where you want them to go.
Yeah, and they wanna go there anyways.
Right. It's a, it's a prime place. Absolutely.
And having all the merchandise in one place has just been, for a number of reasons, easier for us, but also makes sense. So then people aren't saying, oh, we're out of this, but yet it's sitting down in another booth.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so we're happy about that. Winter Fest. So, oh, note here, uh, we're kind of revamping a few things about Summer Fest. Winter Fest will always be that first Saturday in February. Um, kind of just really awesome. And, and this is one of those things too, is the great, like a silver lining of, of the pandemic and changing what you're doing. But we moved everything outside. We used to do stuff outside and inside. It was so much better. It was so, I mean, people like, it just had this really beautiful like village festival feel and we, we had over nine hundred people. It's so great. And so we're totally doing it strictly outside again next year. It just flowed so much better and it felt great. Also got really lucky with like that beautiful fresh snow. That would be great again next year. So that was great. Summer Fest, we're paring down a couple of the things that we do. Because again, as years go on and we sort of talk and look at what we're doing, but we'll still have some really cool events. We'll have three movies in the park this year, one in June, one in July, one in August. Um, and then we are doing, which I'm super excited about, this is something that a lot of other communities do and it's something that I really wanted to do for a long time here. We are going to do a summer concert series, five Wednesdays in the summer. You'll, we already have our great flyer. All the concerts are booked. One of the things that was important to us was to get different types of band for different types of people. So we've got a group that does like uh covers of the Cranberries songs. We've got this awesome kids group. It's like Paula and the Candy Bandits. It's great. The kids are super excited. Uh, the Royal Concert Band we've had for the last couple of years will be back and a couple of others. So the, the, the gentlemen that were at the Oxford Splash uh pad opening park last year and then, and then one other. So really excited about making this a yearly thing. Again, I think it's so Berkeley and I'm excited that we're finally doing it. Um, and I think it's gonna be great. So, and one of the things that we wanna eventually do is be able to have it at different parks. Right now we only have two parks with electricity. So that's community and then obviously Oxford. So it'll be between those two down the road. Hopefully we'll be able to do that at J C as well.
Nice.
Any other questions on one thirty-six? Okay, so one thirty-seven, uh, you're gonna see um our miscellaneous programs. I, we, we have talked uh in our budget meeting, I think we're gonna streamline this a little bit in future years because I'm for some reason, and this is no fault of anyone in this room and no fault of anyone really, but there's certain programs that come out of contractual services and other programs that get their own line item. So um, speaking with Mark, Matt and Lori, I think we're gonna adjust that a little bit. Um, these are some of the classes that come out of this line item, some of them that are not. Um, you also see engineering costs. Um, we will need engineering work for the walkways that we plan to update at J C. And we'll be using them for the actual playground. I don't need them for that, but updating the walkways, we will need them. And then I'll also need them for uh the walkway coming from Oxford uh to connect to uh the, the additional walkway. So you can be able to connect throughout the park.
Nice.
Um, okay, so one thirty-eight, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention all of it. So first, the first line N M U C is uh water for splash pad. So uh, thanks to um, working with our splash pad experts as well as uh Mr. Young here. Um, we, we did our best to estimate our cost from splash pad and we estimated thirty thousand dollars and we came in so, so low. So we were pretty pretty proud of that. Obviously a couple of variables there can give or take, right? Like rainy days, people are out there and uh colder days, people aren't out there, right? So we did our best with what we knew, like whatever. So I think, I, so we planned to maintain, one of the things that we had talked about, we had gotten some comments from residents that wanted us to adjust the hours of what the splash pad were. They wanted us to open earlier. Uh, and we said, we'll look at it, but we're gonna look at cost first. It's our first year. And because we came in and, and, and great at that cost, we really didn't wanna increase it. And we thought that the hours worked, eleven to eight. So we are gonna maintain that. You know, I think a handful of people will wish that we had, we opened a little bit earlier, but we feel pretty confident with what, with where we're at. Um, we open, we plan to open a little bit later than some others. We're opening June tenth this year. It gives us a little time to get a little bit more through the softball season. So it's not super crowded there. They only have a couple of weeks left as opposed to opening on Memorial. But then we stayed open last year until mid-September as well. And we kind of plan to do that as well. Any questions? Continue on one thirty-eight then. So land improvements, what you'll see here are. Any questions? Continue on one thirty-eight then. So land improvements, what you'll see here are the walking trails. At this time, all we're planning on doing is connecting, because right now, it stops at the play structure. We plan to connect to Oxford, so that when you're on Oxford, you're not walking across that grass on the north side. You're going to, it's going to connect, it's going to be just a national path that's going to connect to the everything else, so you can walk entirely, like, through, and then there'll be a little cutoff to the connect to the toddler play area that actually is out there, starting on Tuesday to be installed. So that's what you'll see there. Down the road, we'll have another conversation about, originally, the parkman also called for having a walking path about five to ten feet off of where the fence line is. Right now, we're going to hold off on that. I I think we'll have that conversation down the road, but at least now, you'll have a full walk from one block to another, which I think will be really nice, you know, kind of for continuity. Obviously, as Councilmember Baker just mentioned, you know, JC Park and the crowdfunding, just thrilled that we, I mean, this, this allocation of three hundred eighty thousand dollars is, i- is, is a lot, and it's more than we have either previously asked for, council has has expended, and so I'm incredibly excited to bring it and also grateful. I think it's necessary, and I think it's for such a good cause. I'm also really excited that what could be three hundred eighty thousand dollars, we are now making an almost five hundred thousand dollar play structure, which I think in our city is absolutely incredible, and I'm really, really excited about. I, I think one of the things that's really important to know is, people have made it known in Berkeley that inclusive play is really important. Inclusive play is really, really important, and inclusive play is also very expensive, and the number one thing that makes it expensive is the surface, right? But it's also the most necessary thing to make it fully inclusive.
Yeah.
And so, very excited about this. I was working with our playground designer, speaking with them today, working on getting a final rendering over the next few weeks, so that we can bring that hopefully to council in July, so that 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 work can start in fall of twenty twenty-two, which is what we told people as we were on going with the fundraising. So incredibly grateful for the community's support and and really embracing what we were trying to do there. The other thing that you'll see is that, one of the things that we do need to do, is if we're making this accessible, is to make the pathways nicer and actually accessible, because right now they're not. And so you'll see that, and this will basically take out the pathways that are there, put in six feet concrete pathways, and make those, make those successful. You'll see the engineering.
Wait, timeout. Before you leave JC, I'm just going to say, because we're in that line item, I, you and your department are to be commended, and you have to be so proud of the work, and what really spoke to me, not as a council member, but as a Berkeley resident, like, how the entire community came together.
Yeah.
And this is something everybody could get behind, right? You could toss in five dollars, you could toss in ten thousand. Every single dollar mattered. And whatever your dollar amount was, it makes you part of something amazing. So what a bright shining moment for your department and for our city. I mean, truly, it's a group effort.
You're making me cry, and I think, I did, well.
Yeah, it's not hard to do.
And it's not hard to do. I'm such a crying.
I know, and I, I cry all the time. You know, I used to be crying a few times, but I think for me, I don't know how many people got to see them, but
the videos that Frida Cachin and Natalie DeGore made were, I don't know how you watch that and not, like, embrace what's happening, right? And so, yeah, so it was really beautiful, so I appreciate that. I I purposely did not go into fundraising development or sales, because it does not naturally want to me, so really pushing those boundaries. God bless the people that do that, like, it's needed, it's just not, so, but but I, but I think the why made it, like, possible, so, yeah.
Because no matter where, if you have your why.
Yeah.
Even if you're not like, ooh, I don't like to ask, you know what, no one likes to ask for money. Some people are better at it than others, but how you get really good at it is to ask for it. And ask for it, and ask for it, like, any skill, right? Whether it's an instrument, a sport, speaking, asking, you just get better the more you do it, and I'm just grateful that you had a lot of people that asked, you know, for the money and and asked, pulled in from wherever, and that the residents just looked at this and said, we we have to do this, you know, we want this here, we want it to happen, so, yay.
It's exciting. The difference is is huge, and I think that that's really important for people to know. The difference between what it could be and what it's going to be.
Yes.
Is huge.
Yes.
It's really exciting.
It is exciting.
Yeah.
That's what I particularly call the corporate sponsors as well.
Yes, oh, absolutely. Those people who came through with, like, yeah, absolutely, yeah, thank you. Fencing at Community Field, so this is something.
Oh, the fencing.
This is something that came about through conversations with needs that that the school to transfer different sporting needs, and so this will construct two different fences at Community Field Two and Community Field Three. In the twenty twenty-three year, again, we're kind of continuing with finishing JC. Pavilion repair, so this will be, we're not going to deconstruct the pavement that's there, we're just going to do some updates. Electricity will be added, because we'll be adding restrooms, some higher tables with some plugins, it's something that a lot of people recommend when you're, so that they move out of the way, and it's this really cool thing. I went to a session, it was awesome, but relatively inexpensive to do, and you'll see some updates there, and again, having electricity at the park will be absolutely amazing. Having restrooms at the park as well, updating some netting at Community Park. Some of our netting is getting a little bit worn. Surface material, which we always put, additional drainage at JC Park, which is very needed, and then engineering. Before we move on to equipment, any questions on land improvements and what we have in here?
Yeah, and this is more a process question for us. I think I'd like to see if the land improvements was split out into a separate fund, and the reason being is often in the Parks and Rec budget, it, this portion overshadows everything else, and so, you know, we invest a lot to put in the general fund into this, and it makes it harder to see how the programs themselves are doing. So this, perhaps, equipment, and then both the Parks and Rec Revolving Fund and General Fund contribute into this new Parks Capital Fund. And I think it just gives us a better picture, overall picture of of where the money's coming from.
So clearer, purposes of clarity and and really seeing it directly.
Yes.
Okay. You know, how, how do we do that? Or do we, do we talk about that? Not now, obviously, because I'm on a.
I know, Mark and I have talked about it as well. I think we've tried accounts coming, women large, it may be the opportunity to make sense, because so much of our budget is going to be unfamiliar to us for as far as line, line items and numbers and designations. Might be the time to do it then. I think it's kind of where we left the conversation, but no definitive plan at this point.
Okay, but as the conversation continues, and I think you bring up a good point, Dennis, that, you know, sometimes you're in something, and just because you've been doing it a certain way all the time doesn't make it the best way, and so even if this is a moment to reevaluate and and perhaps make those changes that make sense, but I would ask that, when, if, if and when that happens, that there's a narrative that goes along with it as to why, because sometimes we live, you know,
Right.
Well, this was changed because it made sense, but I don't remember why it made sense, like.
I agree with that. I know Lori can speak on this, too, is that it's been changed quite a few times at different funding instructors or people, and so in the time that I've been here, it's been a whole lot of changes. I have no problem with putting that as a separate, but I do think having a narrative of why would be helpful.
And we shift the bag.
Why did we do that?
Right, yeah, I have no problem with where it comes out of.
Okay.
The initial talent, I think, is the one, which is show the the whole scope with the pro, or the whole scope of the department together. But again, you get an unfair assumption that the, it's just not making money, or it's not supposed to, but it's not, it's just, we're just drowning, when they're making a ton of really awesome improvements and getting that.
Capital's not going to cover itself, right? But the other things are supposed to, and so you'd be able to see it from a picture.
Right. Okay. Natalie, did you have something you wanted to?
It's not super related, but I'll, I will ask it very quickly. Actually, first, Dan, we're talking about putting in electricity in parks. I was curious if the city still was interested in providing Wi-Fi at the parks. Is that still on the city schedule?
Absolutely. That's something Teresa and I can discuss, sure.
Okay, I just remember it coming up a couple of years ago. I'm wondering if it was still on the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I was actually going to ask the same question. Obviously, you know, prior experience with the city, and that stuff continues to be a highly requested item, so whatever we could do to to leverage that additional infrastructure to get the network back haul and stuff like that, and then why you got the conduits open, I think, would be make a lot of sense, and plus, yesterday, we talked a little bit about the electric vehicle charging infrastructure. The opportunity to lay networking capabilities for 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 smart stations down the road. I think it only makes sense to to be able to drop some hotspots up there as well. And then more broadly, this is a, an amazing, just commentary now, an amazing, you know, schedule of things we want to do to to continue to provide high-quality spaces for people to to make the most out of life, and I'm very proud of the work that you and the team are doing with everything to help make all this happen, so.
Thank you.
And yay to the community for rallying around the 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 crowd social thing. It's fantastic.
Thank you, and thank you for that support. It's, it's incredible. I mean, from all of council in terms of recreation. I don't want to. We're just on the timeline now.
No, 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 really, it's a joke.
I just, no, I just, I, you know, I think the way that, I think the way that this community thinks about recreation has just come leaps and bounds, and it's, it's really lovely to see. And so, and then by that, I mean council administration, and and it really helps our department, and that's why we keep pushing and keep wanting to elevate.
Yeah.
And it's two things about that. One, how important it is, right? And then, two, recreation, I I like to remind people, it's not just like, oh, funny things, right? It's facilities, it's maintenance of those facilities, it's pools, it's surface, it's tennis courts, it's, you know, and and those things are costly, and, you know, someone said to me, oh, that seems really expensive, it is, parks are really expensive to build, restrooms are expensive, tennis courts, right? These things, I I'm not going to tell someone that it's not. They are, they're facilities and their maintenance, and so I, the 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 support and the ability to do this is is huge, so thank you. Continuing for equipment elevating, so we we added a couple of things that are, that are brand new in here for this year. Not huge cost, but certainly a cost, trailer for events play, so again, adding to the events that we're doing. One of the things that we run into, and one of the things that we've seen that Oakland County and some other communities have, is like a smallish trailer where you can keep everything all in one, so you're not, you know, constantly hauling in and out and putting it in places that we don't have, the community center for storage, right? So things that you need and that you're using, you know, often, so we're asking for that. Heater for Oxford bathrooms, this came actually through conversations that I've had with 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 Sean Young, with Mr. Young. Also want to point out how invaluable he is to our department. It's so true, and 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 all of GW, but particularly Sean. Rely on him for for a lot of expertise. This will not, I, it's important to note, this will not mean the bathrooms are open year-round. They will not be. What they are are pretty simple wall heaters that mean that we can seal it in a little bit longer in the season and open a little bit sooner, and then protection throughout those really, really cold winter months. But again, we're not, we're not going to be operating a full, which very few, very, very few parks are open year-round. And actually, a lot of parks in Metro Detroit that even have bathroom structures after the pandemic are still keeping them locked and are doing fortifies in front of them, which we obviously do at the concession bathrooms for a host of other reasons that are issues there, so it won't do that, but it will protect and maintain what we have. Generator for event use, we find ourselves constantly borrowing and generator from public works needing it, that sort of thing, and we really just feel like we need our own generator, and that it's a relatively small expense that will be used at a lot of events. And then stage, again, where right now, we're renting stages for what we're doing, and I think that realistically, you can continue doing that, but I think after two, three years, you're going to end up spending more than if we just bought our own simple stage.
Right. Thank you. Two, two points to that second one first. It would be nice for the next, you know, County Oakland Irish Fest to not have City of Southfield right on top of it. That'd be awesome, whenever that can happen. And then back to the the heaters for the restrooms, do we imagine that ob- obviously continuing at JC as well?
Yes.
Part of the design, so just to say, going forward.
We would put it in.
We would put these kinds of things in as part of the the general, you know, maintenance and design of of our facility. That's, that's excellent.
Great point, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
In twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, these are replacements for John Do Gator and then pickup truck. These are scheduled replacements in our seat, in our surf, so. Any questions on those items? I'm going to skip all the way unless there are any questions to one forty-one, which gets us to our senior funds. I'm going to get to brag about Mr. McMahon. I mean, I, I love everyone. So this is our, where you're seeing revenues. Pretty similar to years past. Obviously, we appreciate all that SMART does for us, our SMART funding. We have two fantastic drivers right now. You will see our senior programs. Those are our trips, our lunch outings. They're going tomorrow to see Pen Up Girls at Butterbrook and have lunch. They are currently doing one to two lunches a month. They are doing multiple programs, and then the classes, we're running consistently, some of our biggest, one of our biggest classes is senior exercise on Tuesday and Friday mornings. We are averaging twenty-five to thirty seniors each class for that.
That's great.
It's an absolutely phenomenal class. We got a new instructor in January. We love our instructors of the past, but this instructor, she is just, it is like a club up in there, and it's amazing, and the seniors love it. And so we're really grateful for that. We also run cheer yoga. We run, I mean, just a number of different things, and one of the things that I have asked of Mr. McMahon is to really continue again to push, to offer more and to get more on this past year, if you look at what we've offered, and I will tell you that almost immediately first, every time a new Berkeley Times comes out, we do one for every two months. Seniors are in there, and they'll be, they'll sign up for everything all at once, and most of our stuff sells out within two weeks, maybe less. So they're asking, they want to do things, and I think it's our job and goal to keep providing as much as possible. So really excited about where we're going with seniors. One of the things that I think is always important to point out is that recreation, often, the way we think about it is kids and fun, and all of that is true. Seniors are a huge part of what we think about and what we do, and and who we see regularly, weekly.
And I also think, Teresa, it's important to provide that space to gather and and to be connected, to have, you know, some connectivity within the community.
Yeah, Thursdays, there's Smajon. Every other Monday, there's, you know, I mean, it's just that there's there's space, and and, you know, we provide these spaces at no cost. The senior exercise is two dollars a class. I mean, it's, you know, these are, you know, the lunches and outings, obviously, for those things, but again, those are selling out, so we're just going to keep pushing and adding as much as possible.
Thank you.
And one forty-two, so you'll see, obviously, the expense for the contractual services goes up, but again, the the mirroring revenue is is above that. The the vehicle maintenance of these costs that you see out of here are, again, for our SMART. Most of our maintenance is done in-house through our Mr. Rosie at Public Works. You'll see on one forty-three, our two drivers. James has been with us for six years now, and Brian started with us just this past year. He's fantastic. He's Berkeley resident. We adore both James and Brian, and really feel very fortunate to have them. I know other communities have struggled to get drivers, and we feel really fortunate for the two that we have, nursing years, also. Well, if there's any other notes that I had highlighted, if there's no other questions, that preparation for me, or I'm having any questions.
Any questions for Teresa before we move on? Thank you so much. Dan, thank you for being here, and I appreciate you, and for all that you do. We're grateful.
Thank you. Grateful to you guys. As I told Sean, love them, go get them, but I'll see you guys later.
Does anybody need a break before we jump into the next biggest department?
Five, yes, we could use a quick.
Okay, four minutes.
Yeah.
We're taking four minutes right now, so we got to time. All right, well, okay, no more than five.
Okay, Sean, she set a new target for you there. You got to come to that now. Ready questions? We're going to fix stuff and make it better.
Right, we're going to fix it, make it better.
I named this stuff up.
Yes. Sean, what, what page do we start on, if you know, because just so we can be ready, not that I'm.
We've looked at LED conversions. We've done a lot of LED conversions, but the with the lengths that are left, they weren't as incentives weren't as good as they were with the old lights. Higher wattage, higher usage light. And the prices on LEDs, one of the other, those prices have crept up a little bit. It's like also. Page sixty seven. The summer meetings, learning this with our C O C. And I'm sorry, I jumped still to.
It's good.
All right.
See, summer meetings we do with our C O C, where we need is our C O C. They have to pass two sessions, sweeping and following a twelve mile. Move down a little further, you see the tree program sales. We had that switch a couple of years ago, maybe last year was first year that it was actually free to the resident. There was no cost to the resident.
Can I ask you about the salt?
Yes.
There's quite a big difference between twenty one, twenty two, and twenty two, twenty three in a, you know, decreased. I guess I'm just wondering, oh, honey to ones by salt and the school.
Correct.
Do we sell salt to anyone else?
We just have the surplus from prior years, and that's why the cost is low.
It is. We've been using less salt with newer trucks to use quite a lot of salt, and a lot of this weather dependent.
Yeah. That's what I second.
And.
Yeah, Google.
Then, and if the sheds empty at the end of the season, we try to fill up the previous year's pricing.
Got it.
Begin of the next year, we may have a full burn or you'll buy it.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a little harder to track, but.
A lot of factors. Okay, thank you.
Skip ahead. Sorry, I just hit the highlights.
Yeah, no, my ones are good.
Page sixty nine. Put down the contractual services. That's for spray patch, overbanding, joint sealing. This latest concrete repairs. See those there? Page seventy contractual services, give the ADA ramps. We're looking at a million fill on Kalba to help alleviate some of the waveiness of the speed function there. That's a temporary fix, but it's better than what's there.
Right.
And then.
Buys a couple of years, Sean. Buys a couple of years.
Yeah. Coolidge, we're looking at collaborating with our C O C. Do a mastic repair. They did it on twelve mile right here, right up front. Some of those are mill and filled with, front of the station here was a mastic, which is a hot applied. Almost like liquid material that one seems to form pretty well. So they're willing to do that workforce in charge.
Oh, good.
Move down to engineering, and that's engineering for basically a lot of the programs we just mentioned. Spray patch, overbanding. F A C applications, P A S R ratings, that kind of stuff. There's also Coolidge sidewalk, twelve mile web zone. So it's something that, well, kind of got a path now, but it's replaced that and made something useful. And that's on the east side, east.
I will say, um, beautification advisory committee will be thrilled to hear that that's going to happen. Every single meeting, they bring that pathway up, and they're looking forward to that improvement. So thank you for getting it on here.
Um, I don't know if we can.
Yeah, that's one I.
I know they have some of that.
Just.
The fences, there's just cemeteries and.
Right.
House, kind of a mess. I don't know.
M M L.
Work with them, talk with them.
Actually, they will make us. Definitely a conversation with that. I know it's, it's been a kind of norm for a number of years. Recent years, they've done some cleanup, and I know we've done some cleanup in the past. The fence lines troubles coming. I see that happen, kind of wish that fence line. Kind of put buffer there.
And maybe even this is the moment to, you know, have that conversation, like, this is what we're gonna do. It would be great if you could, I mean, I don't know, but.
Open nice defense.
Something like that, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, those folks over there are just really getting so rowdy and.
They've got complaints. Page seventy one. Tractical services, and that's contingency hauling of street sweepings. We've really lessened that amount. Direct column soccer, soccer has been working with us. As we've been paid, we'll haul it directly to Detroit transportation. Which gets it out of our yard. It can be a mess, and it's good to get it out of there.
Yep.
Got a little more capital. We're looking at trying to get a new street sweeper. Nice budget here. And actually try and run two. Right now, we had two for a number of years, went down to one. One works until you have problems.
Right.
Kind of out that two is probably a better fit. It'll let us hit the city a lot quicker. You have two machines out there, and then you have backup in case one goes down.
Sure.
Yeah. We've been pretty hit this this spring and just calling for a rental. June, I thought of him late March, and he told me, June, you have a rental. And we've had parts on order for three months that we haven't received yet, around the site, so it's, it's been a struggle.
Do we think we'll receive this during the fiscal year, or is that gonna be?
Depending. That's gonna be one of the major questions. We're looking at the different types of machines. We traditionally always had a pelican sweeper. Last year, when we had a rental, we looked in a truck bound it, and it was pretty well received with staff. It was much easier to drive for them. There's really no issues getting out of where they need to. So we're gonna look at all our options, and delivery date's gonna be a big.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I was also gonna ask us some of the question. Suggest that this in front of us as soon as. Yeah, so when we place your order, this hour, we'll get in the line, right, queue.
Well, I'll tell you, I've noticed a lot working from home, and my dogs love the streets. Crazy.
My makes is.
Mine are up there. Yeah, I always know when it's coming.
On page seventy two. Program supplies, that's where you see the costs associated with tree planting program. There's a little typo there. Supposed to be two fifty a tree.
Yeah.
And a hundred and twenty for planning.
Fixed it.
Yeah.
Got that note.
I'm sorry, you say a hundred and fifty for planning? Hundred and twenty, okay.
So it does three seventy, but the breakdown in the parentheses wasn't right.
Okay.
Move a little further down, you see the costs associated for tree trimming, removals. Stump, yeah, raining, clean up. This is J H R does its work for us. It's a split seventy thirty, I believe. Major and local roads. Page seventy three, program supplies, which is just generally material for catch basin replacements, rebuilds. Little, little further down is under contractual services, is removal and disposal of debris from the substance. Go to page seventy five, street signs. Program supplies, you see the sign replacements, and that's generally just worn out signs. Flexibility's gone, faded. Stop sign, poster collectors, and some street paint. But a little more, you see memberships. That's memberships, G I A, just they've helped out on quite projects. That's contractual services. You've got online marketing in Coolidge. And then the public safety is doing the part in on it, part in study. This would be the actual money to do the replacements or installs, removals. By a contractor, maybe not an house. Still going back first, depending on what the study comes up with, will we handle that house or gotta go outside.
Sure.
Makes sense.
So just a comment on the online report, it's on the. That's mostly on Coolidge, right?
Coolidge, and then part of.
So, so Coolidge specifically, I think we need to make a final decision, try to make a final decision on the work item. Or we respray, so we're not resply, then we decided to do something else and have lost that cost. So I think that is a decision we need to make.
So for, for changing from what's out there now, there's gonna be a little more of a cost associated with removing the striping. A little further down, put the maintenance, that's just the traffic signal maintenance. We pay our C O C to handle most of that for us.
That amount is really thirty three thousand, not thirty two four. That had to be adjusted for the scans, wasn't added, correct, Dennis?
That's what I had, yeah.
Yep. So we fixed that thirty three.
For two years.
Yes.
We go to page seventy seven, that's winter meetings. Green seed program supplies. That's for salt, and or salt brand, that's for salt, salt brands, purchased from. You look at the gallons on salt brand, we've gone up quite a bit previous years, we're fifteen hundred, two thousand gallons, about twenty thousand gallons this year. I see that number going up quite a bit, especially when our rest of our equipment comes in, got a large anchor body come in, that's should have already been here.
And that performance better or is more cost effective?
It's more cost effective, it forms better in lower temperatures, allow us to pre-tree roads. If we know a storm's coming, we go out ahead of time, put it down. And hopefully avoid that situation. Right now, it's reactive. We're not out ahead of time for throw self melt ice. We put Brian down ahead of time. It's already doing the work.
Right before we get.
Yeah. But it'll buy us a little more time and make sure we're safe. That's all I had highlighted, two oh two.
Any questions?
Keep rocking.
Number two next?
Two oh three, page eighty one. This is gonna sound really similar to. Two oh two is gonna be in two oh three. Tree planting, tree sales. Page eighty three. Over time, it's basically panel patching, barricading after hours work. Mold supplies, patch stone. Same contractual services. Those amounts.
When you say, sorry, when you say barricading, does that mean like for events and for?
No, this is two oh two, two oh three is, there's a problem in a road for barricading. This is problems road.
Thank you.
Special events, one oh one. That was one nice one. Page eighty four. Herein, it's bearing the here in the other ones, spray patch, overbanding, mast, engineer costs for those. Page eighty five is the same street sweepings. All of those, you know, are basically direct calling the soccer. Since, so you do the tree planting that airs. Two. Tractical services and basically mirrors that's J H R work. Same thing there in two oh two. Page eighty seven, catch basin removals, materials. Three. Page eighty nine is the same thing. It's mirror for sign replacements. Due to just age and condition. Sign post, street painting. Then under contractual services, money heading out, study comes out, money directly replaces signs. And equipment maintenance, it's a traffic.
And Sean, if I may, just wanted to, as a note, just to, to thank you on behalf of historical, they, they continue to love the, the prior street signs are very popular. Fundraiser folks love for nostalgic reasons. We see them going out of state quite a bit, too. Like, people will buy them from all across the country, remember, a street who grew up on or something like that. So the community is very pleased with the support that they, they receive from you and the team with that, and they'd love to, to stay in touch as you see additional artifacts come along, that, that folks might want to pay in their, in their wall to replace, yeah.
But we're having swarm predators.
Somebody in the corner of my street came off the street, hit the signpost. My first thought was, after they were okay, was like, I wonder if that street one's gonna be available now.
Right.
Thinking a weak field now. I don't care if it's a little bad, that's they're, they're popular. People line up around the block.
And then you got out of the way from the car after they had already.
Yeah, why did I, before both safety showed up?
Excellent, thank you.
Page ninety, that's material supplies. That's our rock salt that mirrors two oh two. Four three.
That's it? Any questions for Mr. Yonk?
Not so much a question, but a comment, speaking of, speaking from one of my committees, beautification advisory committee, there's a lot of strong opinions about a lot of these things, which I, they're fantastic, if they're very supportive of the city. Again, they'll be thrilled about that walkway behind the cemetery. Another sort of periodic request that they make, and I just want you to be aware of, is that when the city goes to pull out a sign or an area where the beautification advisory committee has put in plantings, they really like to be notified so that they can save their plantings. A lot of them are, it's the one that comes back year after year for me. Thank you. Perennials, and, and they're happy to come and do the work of removing them. They just need a heads up whenever the D P W does that work.
We know.
So like, I think they've done plantings around a lot of the sites that you enter the city, and there's like a welcome to Berkeley sign.
Yeah, and the bus, the bus stops and stuff.
And the bus stops, they do, and I should have talked to you, said perks and ride a lot of around those sites. I know that doesn't affect you as much.
Yeah, I believe maybe the committee could provide a list to D P W then, so it's like on the radar.
Yeah.
And with a contact person so that they know who to call when they're gonna be ripping out signs.
Yeah.
That would make complete sense. I will ask for that list and pass that on. Thank you.
Well, Sean, thank you so much. How did it feel?
Oh, he said. Yeah. Should have just said right.
He's about a quarter of the way done.
Okay, sorry. The page now?
We're going to page ninety three.
I'm not really in a hurry or anything, contrary to what it seems like. Moving along.
In other words, speed it up, no.
No. I just gotta let go of trying to beat your.
And we, and we are gonna.
Sorry, go on.
You would help for residential trash. I don't know, Mark's gone through it, proposing a four and a half percent increase.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same.
Okay.
Same with commercial trash. You know, special trash, it's show, show our cart sales. Page ninety four. Park cleaner. Soccer's proposing a four and a half percent increase for pickup costs, roast question. Same with trash disposal, page ninety five. A little bit for brush disposal. D P W staff is still forming that, so a lot of the cost is gone. Then, I know there's a question on our equipment and packer bodies, our garbage trucks, so there's no replacements cycle out. Got this, still available, and we got a packer body that goes, actually goes on a home truck. I'm still evaluating how that works to see what direction we're gonna go. That one season, it didn't work pretty well last year, but they can still a little more time. We're spending a lot of money. Six. Page one oh three. Right now, we're doing ten more cornwall.
Why, yes, you are.
Hopefully, that'll start really soon. You know, we're looking at, what is our next project gonna be? And I really don't know that yet. On our radar. I'll just be happy to get through ten more cornwall.
You and me both.
Starting out a little late, so I, I just wanna make sure we're on track.
No, it's good. I mean, honestly, you you know, you'll start when it's ready to begin, so when all the ducks are in a row, so.
Yeah.
We're prepared.
And the link started as more contract.
Oh, it's the stocks, yeah.
Yeah.
It's materials, it's getting materials that you normally be able to get readily available, call it, weeks later to be there.
All of that boat.
Big boat.
Yeah.
See, that's a million dollars there. Some of the funding for chemical loss will come from water side of things.
One three.
Four seven zero, page one oh four. Sidewalks, I don't have a left notice there.
Yeah, yeah, council member hadn't noted, these negatives that show on any fund balance, they won't be there. So you'll, when you get a final budget, I'll get it to Lori and make sure we get it adjusted, but those negative figures will not be there. They'll all be a small positive amount. And that's part of, partly due to the seed money and the loans, and then the repayments that we're getting now for sidewalks. So, right, yeah, the, the the, the numbers will change, but it'll be on the positive side.
I did have a note here, actually, I did have a note for four seven zero, page one oh five. In section, we're gonna go after section three this year, which will leave section one, which is south of Kalba, east of Coolidge. And I really think that's gonna be our toughest section, just size of the trees and the number of trees. Kind of puts that one at the end, hoping things could be easier along the way, but thanks, Derek. I think you have that point.
Yeah, evidently.
Um, before we uncover that out, just wanted to address, we had talked briefly last year about funding, and instead of residents being responsible for their sidewalks, the city taking on that responsibility, and I know Councilman Gavin's looked into this as well, and talking with city manager, we really have found a practical solution for the city to take that over. What I would propose is when we come back for another infrastructure, which is related to the road, we add whatever the appropriate amount, we propose adding whatever the appropriate amount is. That would also cover the sidewalks to that village, and then we have a village funded sidewalk replacement program. And the rationale behind this is we don't make people pay for the critical infrastructure of the water, or the roads right in front of their, right, house, and sidewalks are also critical infrastructure. And so I think that's something that the city as a whole should be bearing the cost for. So unfortunately, I don't think it's something in the near term, but when we look at a infrastructure village that we can tap on just a little more to cover that. I like the, the concept of that. Certainly, we need to have a message for the folks that were unfortunately caught in earlier phases, where they had to pay for themselves, so they're basically paying for other people's sidewalks in addition to their own. So I'm sure we could think of messaging or a way to nuance it, or, or have a addendum or, or something separate. I think, yeah, based on the timelines, it's probably, probably be two whole cycles of the current funding mechanism. So, and those things will be fairly well worked out, repaired, I think, by then, will be a more than maintenance cycle. Right. Yeah, okay, that's a very, that's a very convincing message. Yeah, if we can frame it that way, after like your placement of the bill, whatever you do. Yeah, but I, I I totally get that, that sometimes there's the feeling of winners and losers, but also at some point, you do have to draw a line and. Of course, of course, same thing with broader, you know, outside our scopes, do, and things like that, yeah.
Questions on that? Page one oh five, I think this is our last section. Probably our biggest.
It will be. It will be now.
Actually, I'm sorry, one oh six. Go down to water sales. Water sales.
Just no, I'm sorry, Sean, before you start this note again, we did the adjusted amounts, recommended rates that I showed.
Yesterday.
In the PowerPoint yesterday, yes. But you had the old, recommended rates before we had the final numbers.
Correct, yeah, this doesn't reflect.
Those are, yeah.
You've gone through those, I'm just going down.
Well, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna address that. The thing I like here is in the past four years, our, that I've been on, what practice has been to increase, what our wholesale amounts have increased, but no more, where our costs aren't increasing. The proposed increase here is above what the wholesale costs are, rate and rates, which it's modest, but I support that because our costs of servicing, things are going. I also think it's time for us to consider a water rate study. It's the old one that's roughly expired. They protected it out about this far, and since that one's done, now have the issue of let service line replacements, that was not on the radar at that time. When we get to that section of the budget, I have some questions on those, but so we'll need a mechanism to deal with that unfunded mandate. For increases, maybe the way to do it, but have to find a way to do it that doesn't isn't just, especially for those forwarding pumps, just devastating for them in their pocketbook, so we have to operate now, and cities will, but, uh, raise the price for it. So, yeah, I don't think we have a water fund of water rate study budgeted, but I think that might be something we want to consider very soon, because we can, we can start raising the rates a little bit now, or later, there may have to be a much larger jump all at once. So I'd rather smaller incremental adjustments early on, but I don't have the expertise to know what that rate should be.
Do you know who does those? Is it?
Twenty sixteen, seventeen.
Okay.
I think it was approved by council in March twenty seventeen. I think it was approved by council in March twenty seventeen.
Do you remember what the cost of that study was?
I do not.
Yeah, I was looking forward to and I couldn't find it.
Is there a recommended cadence for those types of studies?
We went five years. We think that was probably as as far as we could get accurate numbers for as far as the especially specific to capital costs. So probably a five year interval makes sense.
Sort of right about that target.
Yeah, didn't estimates ran through this fiscal year coming up.
But it's come from Hannah's point, did not take any of your kind of let service line, that obligation means you have local governments at all. Or a. We'll have to make another issue. And I can't imagine being in a position where you have large industrial or large office catchments as part of your water customer base, because those are so thoroughly gutted. But yeah, I know there's a lot of communities that are in a bad way right now. Is there larger customers just out there anymore?
We can approve this budget without that, with consideration.
Sounds good.
Put a page one away. With all this stationery, spend a lot of money on stationery, water wells. Internally discussing. If we were to email water wells, what would it take? You have to collect, you have to have somebody collect all those email addresses and how much you're linking in the account. Those discussions are happening to. Maybe move away from paper.
Can you? Would you have to? Would you have to email them or could you just? Go online, click on water, you know, something.
Yeah, we're looking at the B S and A online portal. So.
That.
Right, even if it's.
But it's an app, you know, the email would be an app data versus an app.
I think that would make sense because then as long as we know that somebody's out there, then we can stop printing for them that would cut the stationery costs considerably. Yeah.
But also with the water bill, the wire, fill this out and send it back with the water bill when you want to start. Right. Online video. And and I wouldn't propose this initially, but at some point, you know, it's going to be cheaper for us to do online and. Something into this. I don't know my likeness, but.
Oh, but keep going.
You start charging people for the paper bill. But I think the downfall of that is the people you're likely to catch up are the people that can support it.
Correct.
Absolutely.
So that's why I now don't want to work that.
Well, we like the process.
Will we do a one percent, right, administrative charge, which is intended to do just that, cover the the cost of delivering those bills to the the customers? So there is a sort of a function of that already in place now.
Then that would be a matter of if the if the software is sophisticated enough to do like a half a percent for those that choose to go electronic only. Versus the full one percent for those that, you know, continue to receive the paper. I don't know if they can get to that fidelity or not, but. But I like the general direction where we're thinking about something like that. Yeah. To to be more efficient, better for the environment, it saves time because then it's like, man, you got the emails right there. Those kind of things. Yeah, it's a good idea.
Move down to page one oh nine. There is so. Light water taps, leak detection, training. Further downs, trashable services, that's usually outside emergency repairs. Free re assistance here, you're going to see that big unfunded elephant room, which is a lead service line replacements, verifications. Replacements we've been doing since last year, verifications, something. The eagle has dropped on us. We've got to actually go field verify, dig up three hundred and fifty services in two separate locations, so seven hundred holes by two thousand twenty-five. Because our tap parents are are not reliable. They won't accept anything over, say, twenty years. They're not going to accept that information. I honestly don't see that stopping at three hundred and fifty. I think we're going to have to go field verify every service. And we've got alternatives. So when we get to the equipment. Something help us do that.
That's nineteen years of that expense if we. And it ends up in stool. On the. Light service line replacement part of it. Right now, or, you know, we need to do roughly five percent per year to finish everything within the twenty year. We can't take this eight hundred and forty thousand. Is that? Roughly five percent of what we project, or are we moving faster than? And I know it's hard to know because we don't have.
It's hard to know because the seven thousand fifteen a month, I mean, once seven thousand is the rough estimate. Everyone's a little, be a little different. So we're cheaper, especially if it's only a partial replacement for a copper like next. Full replacement can be a little over. Now you've also got the restoration work that's involved with that.
I guess my question more is, do we anticipate this program's going to take twenty years? We're going to finish. We think it will take.
At this rate, it will take.
So we're going to have expenses in this ballpark plus inflation for the next twenty years.
The the only thing that may change that is if we start verifications. We start going through and find out we have less lead than we have. And that that'll change at time until we really verify what we have.
Yes, it reduces the denominator. We know how many we actually have on there.
We're going off the courage, which you said are unreliable. So figure this amount. Verifications will give us, and they're completely random. It's a randomly generated list. So like one on twelve mile, one on eleven mile. So that should give us a good overview. But it's not to tell off, so.
Yeah, so then the nineteen, twenty years, does this really feed into the need for the water rate study? Share, figure out how this.
I'm see the back to run off for catch basic cleaning every two years. And get to equipment, tell. We're what we're looking at is trying to buy a hydro excavation unit that will help eliminate costs or minimize the cost of both those for him contract. Down a little more in engineering. Engineering for our next watering project, still to be determined. Citywide road improvement projects. A little more, you see the cross connections and that's third party assistance with their other mandated. Expressions and that's. Business and residential, residential is fairly new. It's always been required with the DQ or MD or Eagle. Sorry. Never really pushed it.
Well, the program, especially.
It continues for eternity. And it all depends on what kind of business it is. Some are tested every, expected every year and twice tested every year, three years, five years. They're basically a low hazard, high hazard. Personal, then you have residential as well. We move down to page one eleven, utilities. That one may change depending how the office renovations come out. So that's that's our number right now, hopefully a new office that is under construction now that that number changed better. Each one twelve. And professional development. Nastos who are training employees. That one's going to change. It was generally renewals. Now that things have shifted a little bit, having a host of new guys in the mix. Go down to concrete repair, hard state restoration, underground utility work. It's a hundred thousand. I see that number potentially increasing our light service work. That progresses with, see how much frustration is needed with that network. Look at one thirteen. Yeah, basically our capital outlets. There you go. See our normal water re replacement skate valves, hydrants, manholes, that kind of thing. Put on a little more to vehicles. Replacement for outdated director vehicle. Then you see the hydro excavation unit and that's basically a. You're digging with water in a bag, so it's a soft. Soft excavation. So if you've got other utilities in the way, say there's fiber optics in the way, you can dig around those, not damage them. But also coming for verifications, swing that tube over. And now you've got a hole that's eighteen inches round, straight down to find that service versus traditional bathroom, which is a much larger restoration. We've budgeted for both having a contractor do it and machine because I can't guarantee one machine to get here. Just the chassis for it is a year out. So it may be, if we can't find one that's ready to go a couple of years before it actually gets here. So you have to kind of go meet the deadline. We've got it both ways.
Yeah.
That's smart.
So hopefully the cost will less, I'll think it's here soon and we can go ahead and take a lot of the actual stuff out, but I.
Right.
Put on a little more computer software. That number, it seems like it's always increasing. What we do, I never would have thought that it public works. We'd have to have monitors this day. But it's it's changing the worlds that we don't exchange. People just appear. That software's become more and more part of what we do. And we always have to stand for it. Move to page one fifteen. Well, yeah, but we have plenty budgeted for some rain gardens, J C Park. That's something that will work pretty close with our threat. You know, a lot of people think of rain garden. It's just one big pond that I don't think that's the vision they have for the park. And that wouldn't be the vision that I would have. After something flowed with parks, that's something we have to work very closely with. I really think that we have very limited chances to improve our stormwater. And we have one.
I have a question. I'm just curious if there are any grants that are available for recharge that we might qualify for. Yeah. I know I'm in the social media with the Rouge River Basin, which is not, does not apply here, but they offer grants for their communities. So there might be a.
Part of what we hope to implement with G C is what we were sketched out by the water. Participating water towns with the Clint River Watershed Council, so we continue to get some on the mailing list now. They continue to send us stuff every once in a while about finding out. So we throw our hat in the ring when we can because they know that we've got at least the plans in place to implement.
There's some supplemental bills at state level too, as well as they're doing their state appropriations right now and that kind of funneling some of that money from. Infrastructure Investments Jobs Act as well. Opportunities there.
Go to page one seventeen. Improvements, that's our annual sewer line programs. That needs now. Like to continue to do that.
No, we're going to hear.
Good stuff.
You are all of your pages now.
Go ahead.
I got the I got the go now. Sean, I'm so happy that you're here and in leading our DPW department. I was, you know, very pleased when I heard that news. So hopefully continuing, I know you and Derek worked really well together and, you know, we had a lot of camaraderie and a lot of, you know. Same vision in the sense of projects and things like that. So hopefully that will continue and thank you for your hard work. Not just on this budget, but I I I have like all these little things about our departments that. Specifically to me, like I just think DPW does so much that residents aren't really aware of. And thank you for doing that, even when it's not being seen or maybe appreciated. If you weren't doing it, it would definitely be seen, but. Just to every day, get out there and do the things that you do to make Berkeley so wonderful. I really appreciate it and. And I'm just going to say I probably speak at the council when I say those things, but if anyone wants to add or please feel free to jump in. We're truly, truly blessed in the city to to have the departments that we do. And I'm throwing that out to everyone here because. You know, it's a lot of hard work. And you guys start this way earlier than when we get it. So thank you.
We'll see you on the team.
Yeah.
And I do have to say. DPW does have the toughest budget.
Oh.
There and I will do the same for you. I've always given them extra time because it's just so.
Lots of moving parts in there. Okay.
Yeah, excellent job.
And it's still light out.
You're like over an hour ahead of schedule.
Seriously?
Well, according to this little time.
Let's let's go. Mark, I think you're up next. Yes.
Yeah, it was a little off of my time estimates, but in a good way. So. Page thirteen is where I will start our finance. Again, no real significant changes from the previous year. I did catch in looking at it, I should have caught it sooner is. I was all proud because I finally have notes. I never had notes before, but I have my metrics in there twice. So you knocked out forty-six fifty right out of the gate. That top one.
Oh.
I didn't realize I had that twice.
Which one is going?
The tough forty-six fifty. Yeah.
Well, there's the savings.
Always looks good. Add it now. Oh, oh. But on on that page, I said, everything else is pretty much similar, not the same. I will mention council member hadn't again caught the the increase twenty-three, twenty-four in the full time employees is. Matt's planning ahead for a possible assistant finance director when I'm ready to retire.
I should have put it out in there.
Somebody who I can overlap. With and show what we do. Hopefully, when Lori decides to leave, she does the same thing. We'll probably get somebody that she can train. So but we're still trying to figure out. Roles and responsibilities and finance, if we keep everything the same or not. But Matt wanted to make sure we were covered. I don't think it'll be as much as we got in there with. And then with you're not approving twenty-three, twenty-four, but I did want to mention that.
Let's throw those with some history. You remember my first couple of years here, I started on Tuesday, the previous finance director had left on the Friday. And then we we went through, I think, five finance directors in my four years at the I S. It's not gotten any easier to hire these people. I have peers and friends in the industry that are in that situation and just ripping their hair out. So this is our. Chance at not going back through that again, finding somebody who understands steadily good, understands the Berkeley way. And can integrate themselves into our culture rebuilding and then fully move one office over when the day comes.
And I was planning to retire later this year, but my wife informs me that's not happening. So I'm extending my stay.
Thank your wife.
And I, again, I'll use some commentary here, put in some commentary. I was thrilled when Matt called me when I was out of work. For my previous employer and, you know, obviously was thrilled to get back to the finance side of things. It was a dual role where I was at before. And it, this is a great place to be. It really is. And I think you'll hear every director, we appreciate your praise, but. I will tell everybody, if you want to see how to run. I will tell everybody, if you want to see how to run a city council meeting, watch a Berkeley meeting. Everybody, everybody that asks, you you do a tremendous job, all of you. So thank you. I'm. Page fourteen again, not a whole lot of changes, pretty much. In this previous years, nothing exciting there. If there's no questions, we'll move on to. Page one hundred.
Just one.
I'm sorry.
Just a random question. Do you know when the contract is up for the assessors pre-qualization?
It's a three year. If it's not the end of the upcoming year. Yeah, I think it is. I think it's the twenty two twenty three year is when it expires. Thank you. So and they usually propose, I think they've been proposing three years for a while now. And they they build in very minor increases. So.
Thank you.
Next will be. Sixteen, I'm sorry. Treasury, that's Brian and Phyllis. Both do a tremendous job. Brian has the title of deputy treasurer, but truly is the treasurer. He he does all the work in that office. I know when we met with Ross and and Mr. Wittenberg, we, you know, I again, I commend him because he does all the treasury work. And with very little fanfare as well. So I appreciate everything he does. And Phyllis as well. Phyllis brought experience from. Kigo and loves to be here, but has made it very clear. Our time is it. She's not going beyond that. So.
And I will just say, if I may, that during Brian's absence during his health issue. I don't know about you guys, but I certainly found out how valuable he was. You know, and it's nice when someone's not here.
Right.
To find out. How much they're missed rather than wow, they don't really. That much, you know, I mean, honest to God, we just Phyllis and I and. Really scrambled to try to figure out some of the stuff that Brian was doing.
We did a fair job. Phyllis was really.
Was great. Yeah. Thank God she had the experience that she did from Kigo because she was able to step in, work directly with the county, get us through that. Although I will, I did have to chastise Brian a little bit because we've been telling him for two years to get somebody trained in case something happens. So. Or in case he decided to leave. So we found out the hard way. He needed to give us a little more training, but yeah, Phyllis did a great job.
Right.
Everybody did. Everybody stepped up. So I'm thrilled to have him back.
And if you remember Brian and see him today. Is near unrecognizable. The guy's a sliver of what he's. And still making progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's quite the wake up call.
He's gone the right direction. I've gone the wrong. But I did tell him we can take walks around the building, have lunchtime and go get salads and water. From a Mr. Kabob, so.
Nice.
But on his budget, there's. Again, not not much changing. Airline operating machines. Any questions on sixteen? If not, we will move to. Hundred, which is our C D V G. It's under cap three, page one hundred. And again, that's we put in thirty five, but we've been getting, you know, in the neighborhood of forty forty one. Near the year, the plan is is the same. We. Now that we and I'll credit Aaron Schluto and Teresa for. Doing some data and realizing that we could utilize some of that C D B G money for the park paths. Which we think is an excellent use. The ADA bumpy strips were just, you know, again, John's not here, but Derek said. They're more of a pain than they are, you know, a help because they're so hard to do, but. The path stuff should be simpler and each of our seats embracing that as well. So vectors. There's a meeting Friday onsite with Mike Puker from C D B G and at the county is meeting with us on site. He tries to keep those. Projects on track. We did just recently finalize finally the. Project and we've got about five thousand dollars left for reimbursement there. To pay the casco, the contractor and then we'll get that. So but yeah, we're we're in the neighborhood of forty thousand. Even is an annual. Around thirty five hundred are large print books that we get at the library. Very well used and then the the snow clearing for seniors through the Parks and Rec Department, Teresa. Handles that, does a great job. Any questions on one hundred or one hundred one? If not, we'll move to sixty three. Extract a little bit. The first. And that's our active employee benefits. Again, not significant changes. Our self insured healthcare plan, we did have. Some spikes, I think I mentioned it yesterday during the PowerPoint. But again, it's still. Much more affordable than. Fully insured plans. We still opt out P A one fifty two, but it's worked out well for us because we've been able to contain our costs. Councilmember Price did ask it, a council meeting, I was at. About looking into the clinic, the wellness clinic in Madison Heights, and we have a meeting scheduled. To talk about that. They're they're going to put together a proposal for us. Obviously, it'll have to be something the employees are in favor of, and then ultimately city councils in favor of, but we're looking at seriously looking at that. And we have a meeting scheduled. Mark with Mark Manquinn coming up soon. We're gonna look at their proposal and then we'll at some point bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Sure. But again, the other benefits. The MERS. In fact, you want me to mention our brief discussion today, we did talk about pension bonds. There'll be some preliminary work. They're going to give us a free of charge proposal to kind of see whether or not the savings with bond rates going up now. We don't know that we'll meet the savings to make it beneficial. So we're going to look at that first before. It it comes to you, but we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at it anyways to see if timing wise, it might be best to push. Push that back with rates coming up, you know, Pat McGow, who's the bond attorney said. Maybe a year from now it'll be better to look at, but they made some changes to it to public act thirty four. So that it's a little more difficult to do now, but we're gonna look at it anyway, as we've as we've told council we would.
As favorable as we hoped at this point, there's certainly there's a lot of thresholds we need to meet. But apparently treasury doesn't isn't a fan of these, so they at the state level. So they've worked to make it so much more difficult for municipalities.
There's no questions on sixty three. Sixty four is our retiree MERS benefits. Same thing there. We have coverage for three sixty five retirees and then our post sixty five retirees are on a Medicare advantage plan. Again, very affordable. Sustainable, new new hires going back to two thousand and eight. Are no longer eligible for retiree healthcare. Although the unions did try to get back on retiree healthcare and we told them it's just not affordable or sustainable. So and they were understanding. So the one thing we did do is we we bumped up the contribution by the city into that plan, which I know they all appreciate it. So. That was helpful for them, I believe. So it helps the city as well. We're Matt and I are constantly looking at employee retention options whenever we can. So. And we again, we still feel even with the D C plan for new hires now, we still feel like we've got a very good benefit package here. To attract and retain employees.
I think it's. Always. Yeah. Just wanted to point out that just with the job market the way it is, it is such a. Employee market and I think that these efforts to respond well to the unions and with the retention in mind are. So necessary. And I just want to say personally, I appreciate them very much. I think retaining good employees. As much as possible is in the best interest of the city, of the residents, of our financial situation, because we know it costs more when you have to hire and train people. And I'm just grateful for these efforts. Well, thank you and for negotiating both of you, the union contracts in the way that you did with that.
Thank you. On the MERS service credit. You know, they've been substantial the past couple of years. We think that's largely in one of its course.
Yeah, we do. In fact, well, we've got another one in the next one, but the DPW, you know, were available. It was it was kind of vague. When I met with them originally as to whether they cannot, they could or couldn't do service purchase credit. So we made it clear again that there's potential savings to the city. And for them to be able to purchase that service time, we had a bunch, as you're aware, on one agenda, we had several. And then now we're we're just, it's close to running its courts because the. Majority of the people that are we're now available or newly available have taken advantage of it. So we should, we'll still see, we still may see one or two each year. And I appreciate your suggestion last year to make sure we at least budget. Some money in that fund and thirty thousand seems to be a good number. So. But yeah, we're 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 at a point where the majority of the people eligible. Have taken advantage of it. Some of the new hires as they come in, you know, now are on the D C plan. So it won't be, won't be a service purchase option. And then we can move to sixty five is our public safety pension benefits. And again, it's, we distribute that out. We get a pretty good breakdown for Blue Cross Blue Shield and our retiree costs. And again, I'm amazed at the low retiree healthcare cost that Berkeley maintains. We must have very healthy retirees. Because the cost remained pretty low. Any questions on sixty four sixty five? I'll move on to sixty six is just the transfer and that's the transfer to. Cover the excess and I know council member Henan, again, I I think it's a great idea. We'll look very seriously on moving. The. The big portion of the recreation revolving fund, which is the park improvements and the equipment into its own fund. I think that's a great idea. And we'll look, Lori and I are working on the chart of counts changes, which is a massive undertaking with the S D A's assistance, but. That would be a good time to do it if we're gonna do it. So certainly look at that.
As you guys are thinking about that, is there a way that I know it's a minor inconvenience in our part to jump back and forth, you know, a hundred pages here, a hundred pages there. Is there a way to have them be a bit more sequential as part of the the. Is there any charter of accounts and things like that? It's definitely a side question.
Yeah, there the requirements that they have now are going to put so that from city to city to city. They like the treasurer's account is going to be the same for every city, one oh one, two, five, three. Clerks will be one oh one, two fifteen. So the organization that they're undertaking is going to put everybody. The same sequentially, they'll be close. And then some of these forced changes, I'll call them. I think they're trying to do that. I think they're trying to put things more in area function. In the general fund, again, departments are all going to be the same across the state. So once you adopt, and again, you're forced to do it. Things will be a little more organized. I mean, it's, I don't know how much more organized, but it's another one of those. You know, things they're saying, everyone, everybody the same. You've got this timeframe to do it. And for us, it's this next fiscal year.
Yeah, thank you. And then as we revisit our our agenda for subsequent budget hearings, we can realign with.
Oh, okay.
So a combination of both moving numbers around and moving the agendas around so that it's. A bit more, you know, consistent and just kind of flows well. Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
So I I had a comment I was going to bring up later, but it's a good time, but. Planning and building departments are separate funds right now, but. Really seem the same, you know, under our community development section. So I don't know. It would make sense to work those together.
But we have to follow.
Yes, I understand. So if the state says they have to be separate, that they have to be separate. So I get that. What do you have any discretion?
Yeah, some of those we can look at if it makes sense to combine.
Even in even in the past, we've got a community development budget or departments, like a budget department, not like an actual city department. But there's a department for community development, planning this one building as well. I'd like to get to the point where I can begin compare building revenues to building expenditures more directly. I don't want that to get lost if you combine everything on community developments, but if there's a way to accomplish it, then it'd be much easier. Well. Separate as well. And I made with, you know, earlier, so.
Yeah, we'll follow the recommended chart of accounts, the standard chart of accounts. And if there's areas where where it makes sense to combine, you know, and we can waiver from it a little bit, we will.
To kind of balance both of them, right? The idea for that and also to have the ability to. To discern the revenues versus expenses. So that. To be balanced. I can be. I can be more important to be able to see the revenue versus expenses rather than. Where it makes sense.
One forty five is. Our fringe benefits fund. And that's really just, that's something that I think David Sabuda put together. It was to try and set aside money for retiree buyouts for the most part. When people retire and they have accumulated leave time and they get bought out. That was kind of the intent of that. And I think that was a recommendation by plant man said. If you can do it again, Berkeley's ahead of the game because. Most of the communities or other communities around here don't have a separate fund. To set that up. To fund that in in advance. So.
So you get two or three people retiring in the same year.
Yeah.
You're not expecting that couple hundred thousand.
Right.
To be coming or whatever it might be.
Yeah, it's a very good idea and good to have. On an annual basis, again, it's that and the and the O P E D. Trust funding that Berkeley has done are again, there are things that are. Put you ahead of a lot of similar communities because you you thought ahead and planned for these things and it's good to have that reserve. But in in again, not many changes. It's a small fund. And I I don't have any transfers because the plan this year is to utilize some of the cash that's in there. David's. Plan from year to year and it's kept that way is to transfer in from the general fund, the amount to cover any. Buyouts for that year and there, but there is a healthy reserve. So for a couple of years, if we might spend down that cash. I think we have opportunity to do that and that's that's what I'm recommending. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that fund. If not, we can flip forward to page one fifty. Is our safety pension.
Sorry, I did not sorry. Some of the question negative balances. Is that a convenient issue?
No, the the six ninety and I appreciate you pointing that out to in your questions, but. Yeah, those those negative balances won't be there because we'll take. Transfer money from cash. When we do the the buybacks at the end, the money will come from cash as as opposed to gun technically. Six ninety doesn't really have a fun balance, but if you take it does, but. If you take cash instead of the transfer from the general fund, to spend down that cash for whatever amount that is. So there there will be no negative balance. And again, I'll, I think there's a way I can do that within the budget to correct it. So I'll get that to worry as well. That here. Okay. And then last but not least, our. Page one fifteen, one fifty one is our public safety pension fund. I said, we were just over eighty percent funded. At the end of last fiscal year. And and then we had a couple of good quarters of returns. In twenty twenty one. In first half our fiscal year. Our first quarter was. A slight loss and then I'm expecting this quarter will be the same, but. As far as what we've got budgeted for investment earnings, we'll we'll we should hit that target. If you can see on page one fifty, if you look in twenty twenty one activity, we had our obviously a really good year. Online item seven thirty two zero zero one six 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 four. We earned almost five million dollars in investment earnings. And, you know, we were. Projected at three million, seven fifty this year. So. I mean, I feel like Lori does those entries for for us quarterly and.
Right. So I'm only working on the second. Right. So I'm only working on the second quarter.
That's okay.
Yeah.
We'll see where we end the year. But we, we did have a couple of rough quarters. We're in the middle of a rough quarter to start the year. So, but we've got a really good balanced portfolio. The trustee board for the public safety pension, uh, we've, we've got public safety active members. We have, if you know, Jim Smith, uh, involves three years, has been on that board, continues to provide good service. And then we're with, what formerly was Plank Moran Financial Advisors is now CAP Trust and their investment advisor. And Brett, we're, does a great job with that. But we meet monthly and then some months we don't meet just because we don't have any business to conduct, but pay the invoices. But, uh, but again, that's, that's a healthy pension fund and we're pleased with it. We, we have a lot of discussion. Mark Mason, oh, if it's, is the mayor appointee on that board and he's very knowledgeable in investments. On guy himself, very valuable to the board, has a lot of good insights. So each time we meet, we, uh, we have good discussion and Brett does a good job keeping us on track. Any questions there? Okay, I think we're done.
For real? Any comments or questions from?
Just a heartfelt thank you to all the partners, to you guys, just incredible work. And it's a heavy lift for sure. So thank you all very much.
Ditto to that, as well as, um, you know, Mark and your department, Lori especially, Stan and Tori. And I'm just going to say this out loud. I sometimes refer to you guys as story. Hollywoodize you, but all the work, getting this room ready, getting, making sure all the technologies.
Driving the screen.
I mean, all of it. Thank you. Um, again, a lot of the behind the scenes things to bring this, um, this meeting, these work sessions to life and, you know, not only for us, but for anyone choosing to watch. And from, from the recording. And then all directors, I want to say a special thank you because this was a really tough year. And I know Mary TruRic mentioned it yesterday. It's, it's great to have your wish list and, and to be creating your budgets when, when we have a, you know, when there's money. But we asked you to sharpen your pencils this year and you did, and you did it without complaining. And, um, to me, that speaks volumes. And I think that, you know, understanding what has to be done for the good of the city, for the good of everyone, and being a team player, I think is, um, critical in this kind of a moment, because at the end of the day, we're able to still deliver services to our residents that they've come to know and expect and that they, I know they appreciate. So, so thank you, everyone. For that as well. I also wanted to point out that Berkeley Days is this weekend. Softball tomorrow. We will miss the mayor. Hopefully we will, oh, sorry, Thursday. I am still like off a day, but Thursday. You know what? And that's probably part of it too. But, um, I know that the Berkeley Days Carnival has been rolling into town. And I really want to thank Teresa and her department for, again, all that behind the scenes work that they do. Getting everything set and ready for Berkeley Days. Thank you to the Berkeley Days Committee for putting on the event. Um, and I think that the city itself is looking for, you know, this, to have some fun, to have this event back. So, um, we all look forward to that. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Whoa, okay. Nice, Councilor Baker with support from Councilmember Gavin. Sure, do it.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Yes.
Bellany?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Yes. The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Tuesday evening, May tenth budget session is officially adjourned.
One minute longer.